All right, I'd like to call the December Board of Commissioners meeting to order. I thank everyone for attending this morning's meeting, both in person and virtually. Before we move to the agenda, I want to point out today's format, which allows public access. We are broadcasting this meeting live on a virtual platform. For reference, all information shared today is available online at www.nra.us in the Board of Commissioners section. We will allow public comment near the end of today's agenda, and virtual participants will have the opportunity to raise their hands to comment. And when we get closer to that point, I will share those prompt instructions to make sure that folks understand what they need to do. Also, just a quick reminder that NRHA's annual employee meeting is tomorrow, Friday, December 11, and that begins at 11:00 a.m. Please join us in celebrating our great team, One NRHA, and all that they accomplished together during this challenging year. Jen will give us more details about the virtual event. Also, Ron and I have worked with Dr. Sanchez, as you know, to come up with some guiding principles or ways forward based upon your comments and material that were from the retreat we had back on October 26 and 28. Ron will update us more in detail during his comment period. Also, just to let you know that at the end of your package, there is the draft 2021 board meeting calendar date. And if there are any issues with those, let's talk about those or let us know so that we can adjust as necessary. Also, the Housing and Safety Committee and the HCV Committee, I wanted the board to have a larger conversation about public safety and community engagement within our housing communities, especially those communities where we have recently experienced more significant events. Instead of having a separate meeting, it was suggested that we make some time today during the comment period of the commissioners to discuss that further. Again, staff would like to start off the discussion during the executive director's comments, after which time commissioners can follow up with any related discussions and comments. With that now, I'll invite your comments, if any, on the minutes from the following meetings. Unfortunately, we need to do those separately. So let's talk about the comments, if any, on the Board of Commissioners meeting of November 12, 2020. Any comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve. So move a second.
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 Ms. Carne.
Mr. Albert.
Aye.
Mr. Gresham.
Aye.
Ms. Purrier.
Aye.
Mr. Benassi.
Aye.
Mr. Dillard.
Aye.
Mr. Musachi.
Aye. We'll now go to the meetings of the Retreat Session 1 from November 26. Any comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve. So move a second.
Second.
Thank you. Ms. Carne.
Mr. Albert.
Aye.
Ms. Gresham.
Aye.
Ms. Purrier.
Aye.
Mr. Benassi.
Aye.
Mr. Dillard.
Aye.
Chairman Musachi.
Aye. And last but not least, the Board of Commissioners Retreat Session 2 of November 28. Any comments? Then I'll entertain a motion to approve. So move a second. Second. Again, Ms. Carne.
Mr. Albert.
Aye.
Mr. Gresham.
Aye.
Ms. Purrier.
Aye.
Mr. Benassi.
Aye.
Mr. Dillard.
Aye.
Chairman Musachi.
Aye. Thank you. We'll now move on to the regular part of the agenda, and that was starting off with the remarks from our executive director. Ron.
Thank you, Chairman, and good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Couple items I just wanted to bring to your attention. The first being that our economic inclusion, that's been a topic that we've discussed over the past several months. And staff, myself and staff, have been working toward trying to develop an economic inclusion plan specifically for NRHA. And part of that effort is to, instead of adopting just some goals to be able to achieve, we wanted to start up from the bottom, actually. We wanted to get some comments from MVA and MVB contractors. So back in November, November 19, we actually had what we call a roundtable of minority of female business enterprises, just to get their comments on some of their experiences of working with, not only NRHA, but other authorities and government entities throughout the area. And our primary purpose was to hear from them, to see if there were any obstacles and things that they had experienced in being able to give work from us. And it was very enlightening to hear some of the comments that they were able to express. It was very well attended. You know, we definitely wanted folks to be open. And we, for example, some of the things we found out was, like the paperwork that they received, you know, for example, typically our contract, or I wouldn't say contract, but the proposal say on average about 70 pages.
70?
70, 7-0 pages. But there's only really five pages that they really need to be mindful of, but there are intermixed in there. So there were things that we heard from them that we could do internally without really a whole lot of work, that we could do to make things a little bit more accessible to them. So what we've done is taken their comments, given what we could do administratively to lessen some of the obstacles. I know there are some things in terms of capacity and, you know, some of the other things that they may, bonding, that kind of stuff, that may be a little bit more mid the long term that we still would try to work with them on. But there are some things that we could do internally, even in terms of like processing payments and, you know, things like that, getting those done a lot sooner, that we're looking at to see if we can streamline. But we'd like to continue on with that conversation, implement some of the things that we heard, and probably sometime around the first quarter of the year, actually to be able to have an economic inclusion plan. I know the city, I think at their last meeting adopted an economic inclusion plan, but we just felt like we needed to start on the ground. We needed to hear from the contractors first before we actually started incorporating any goals. So our goal is to actually, like I said, to have one in place in the first quarter of next year. Another item I'd like to bring your attention is the organizational assessment. I mentioned it to you last month, that we had hired a firm that we wanted to sort of examine our current operations and make some suggestions on how we can do business in a better way, maybe adopt some best practices. And one of the things I failed to mention is that once they finish their assessment, they'd like to be able to come to the board and do like an executive summary of some of their findings and recommendations. They anticipate being finished around March with the assessment. They're currently interviewing all of departments and trying to get some sense of how things are. And it's a little difficult, I wouldn't say it's difficult, but it's probably a little bit more time consuming than in the sense that they have to do everything virtually now. But they have all the documents and things that they need, and then they started interviewing staff and anticipate having a draft assessment done, like I said, in March. And around that time, we'll make arrangements for them to do a presentation before the board, before finalizing the report. Something sort of related to that, but something that we did back in, when we adopted the budget back in June, was that we had a, what we considered, well, the, we had defunded all the vacant positions at the time. And with that, we developed a, we had like a team to review any requests for positions that we needed to add back on the budget. In order for it to sort of grow a little, that process to go a little quicker, we had asked the board to grant me what I call an allowance. It was like $530,000. And what y'all would do is we will give you, as much as this is an asset, we'll give you an allowance of $530,000. We formed a team, which is primarily the executive team who received the request and reviewed to make sure that it's something that was needed, if there weren't any other options to get the work done. You know, we had asked questions about that. And the reason I mention it is sort of in the context of organizational assessment is that we didn't really, going through the organizational assessment, we didn't want to actually hire that position that could, in the grand scheme of the organizational assessment, be eliminated some down the road, or there wouldn't be a need or there'd be an opportunity for there to be some kind of joint effort or revision in the position. So that was another part of having the defunding the vacant position. But anyway, I just wanted to report to you that out of the $530,000, we have approved nine positions, which comes to about $320,000. And we have about, I think it's about $221,000 still remaining on my allowance. So I just wanted to report to you all back that we're still going through that process. There's still a little bit of money left in terms of bringing back defunded positions, but we're still going through that process. And also, like I said, those questions generally relate to, we wanted, ideally wanted to make, we wanted to wait till the organizational assessment was complete, but we understand in some cases, you know, especially during the pandemic, where there were so many needs for certain positions and things like that have come about, that we just couldn't delay it that much further. So, we already talked about that. Also, a follow-up on the development of the guidelines, of guiding principles from the retreat that Don had mentioned. We have worked with Dr. Sanchez. She was able to pull some of your comments and some of the materials to actually come up with some draft guidelines. And we wanted to, we just didn't want to call it guidelines, because you know, we know that you already have guidelines, but we wanted to call it guiding principles for inclusion and diversity. Now, I mean, you could change that once we sort of get to the point of actually organizing the guiding principles, but just to distinguish from the guiding principles that you read, that you adopted, I think it was last year, we want to call it guiding principles for diversity or inclusion and diversity. Anyway, I'll be sending you a ladder with all the suggested guiding principles. And in that, you'll have the, you'll have the opportunity to, you can add more or modify or provide comments. And those comments will be sent directly to Dr. Sanchez. The ladder will be coming from me, you know, basically saying, hey, don't reply all when you respond, but respond directly to Dr. Sanchez if you have any other suggestions from the ones that are already in her ladder. And then we just asked that you respond to her by January the 9th, and she'd like to get them all together and be able to present something in the January 14 board meeting, or any additional discussion on those guiding principles so we could finalize that. And that's important for us, well, for me and staff, because that'll give us some of the parameters with the guiding principles. The idea was that we didn't just want to have guiding principles for inclusion and diversity or culture or conquest. They just, you know, they just sit up on a, you know, they're just a poster somewhere. But we actually wanted to follow up with those. And happily, we talked about having principles, guiding principles, that have consequences, that's exactly what we meant. We would take those and we would drill down to our personnel policy, our evaluations, staff training and things like that, that we'd want to come from the development of those guiding principles. And like I said, that'll be, that level will be coming out from me today. And then the last thing, Don had mentioned about the further conversations that the Public, the Housing and Safety Committee and the Housing Choice Vouching Committee wanted to have with the other commissioners. One of the things that staff did as a follow-up, I know that we had Chief Boone and Sergeant Dixon here to sort of give an overview, taking into consideration what the committees wanted to discuss. We reached out to Norfolk Police Department. We had a sort of a strategy session. We got a better feel for some of the things that they're doing, like behind the scenes, and some of our hot spot areas. And just sort of to give you the, I said, the gravity of the situation, if you look at, I think it's on page 49, oh, page 69 of your board packet, and that you'll see some pictures of some of the gang members. I mean, that sort of lets you know the gravity of the situation that we're facing. When I started, first saw those pictures, I said that, you know, I could see, I could see my son, and I mean, that's the age that they are, but they're just, I mean, it just gives you a sense of where they are. And, you know, these are 18, 19-year-olds. Like I said, I see my son in those pictures, and it's like, wow, this is, this is the world that they're living in. And so, you know, it's really incumbent on us that we come up with some real impactful strategies to try to address that. So we did meet with Hampton Police, I mean, sorry, Norfolk Police Department, and we got a better sense of what they're doing behind the scenes. And that's why I'd asked Karen and Ryan to sort of elaborate a little bit more on our discussions with Norfolk Police Department. So Karen, if you're on the line, if you could, could you just summarize some of the things that we had talked about at our strategy meeting with the Norfolk Police?
Yes, sir. Good morning, everyone.
Good morning, sir.
As our executive director stated, we met with some of the command staff of the Norfolk Police Department as a result of a conversation with the chief relative to the uptick of crime in our community, specifically Calvert Square. During that meeting, we talked about several strategies on the police side and the housing authority side to address crime, and also to try to brainstorm in ways of trying to engage our residents, which still is a task for us. As Mr. Jackson stated, the police department is looking at adding additional officers to our CRO unit, and we continue to have officers assigned in overtime capacity. Right now, we've got some specialized units out there on the street that are still in the community. One is an anti-crime initiative unit, which targets our hot spots. And they also have set up safety engagement zones. During that time, what they do is they have police cars that sit in strategic locations to stop certain vehicles. They look for that are listed, other key information of drug dealers or gang affiliates that frequent our communities as a way to deter crime. I can tell you when they set up over in Calvert Square, we had probably about 150 cars that turned around as they saw the safety zone set up. And certainly, we would have had more, but I'm sure the word got out on the street that we were kind of closing down Calvert, trying to make it just a little bit safer so those folks can come out of their houses. So right now, on the housing authority side, we have made it known, and we will be sending out some correspondence at the direction of the executive director, that we will have a zero tolerance of a crime. We're holding households accountable if they are assisting or harboring fugitives or these gang associates. At this time, we have held some GTAs over in Calvert Square and targeted a couple of households over there. We were able to speak with those households in person, still utilizing CDC guidelines and making sure that staff and the residents were safe. We thought that was very important to have a face-to-face conversation. We have seen some improvement over in Calvert and have gotten some different information as a result of those GTAs. We will continue to do so. We've got four other households that we need to meet with, and we are hoping that that would deter some of the crime. As for the police department side, we will continue to meet. I'm brief daily on their efforts from a criminal standpoint. One of the things that is most significant, as we looked at Calvert, because there were so many active shootings over in Calvert, we wanted to make sure that we were not missing the ball when it comes to the rest of the community. We noticed based on the crime stats and the information coming from the community, that Oakley Forest by far had more issues over there. They just had issues that were reported to the police. We continue to try to monitor Oakley Forest. What we don't want is to put all our eggs in one basket, focus on one community, and the other ones kind of run amok, if that makes sense. So Mr. Jackson or Board of Commissioners, unless you have anything additional for me, I'd be happy to answer questions.
Commissioners? Are there any problems over at Diggs, please say, of major consequence?
But I'm sorry, you were a little bit muffled. Did you say Diggs Town, sir?
Yes.
No, sir, we have not reported any significant crimes over in Diggs Town. Oakley seems to be a major concern right now. And I'm sure the demographics and the design of Oakley presents a problem for us. However, we're trying to use all of our resources, there again, from the police side and the housing side, to try to address those issues. But right now, Oakley and Calvert are our two top problems.
Okay. Other comments, questions?
Yeah, this is Ken Benassi. I've got a couple of comments. I'd like to go back to Ron's earlier comments about economic inclusion. And I would suggest that doing some proactive recruiting at Norfolk State and Hampton University might be part of solving it. I certainly would volunteer to meet with some people there, talk about becoming entrepreneurs, especially people in construction, architecture. These are the, these professional fields are some of the fields that we just really struggle getting bidders. And, you know, we're pretty good to count for somebody. So, I mean, we could give someone potentially considering the architectural route something to shoot for, a business plan to build around to get started.
Okay. All right, we'll make sure to include you as we go forward, yeah.
Well, and additionally, would also be after that to try to see if you could establish mentoring, where they learn the hands-on processes from, you know, an established company so that they don't make the fresh start for mistakes of starting and being interested.
And that's a great idea, Dick. That should be invaluable in this multi-step process.
Yep, all right. Okay, great. Other comments? All right, then, just.
I've got another comment about the photographs. The photographs we saw in the package, help me, where were those taken? Talking about the photograph of the resident with guns.
Karen, did you get a question?
Yes, I did. I was, I'm sorry, I was unmuting my phone. Those photographs were taken at various locations in our community. The majority of them taken over in Calvert and Young.
They were beyond disturbing.
Amen, yeah.
Yes, sir, I totally agree. We continue to have, I'm sorry.
Is there anything that we can do proactively to start any type of positive conversations with those individuals? I mean, you know, I'm talking about a group of people walking around saying, hey, man. And I don't know how to initiate that, and my God, it could be full of risk. But, I mean, that, those people just seem to be disconnected from.
Karen. I don't mean to interrupt you, but it ain't that kind of party. You can't go out there like that, talking to those people. I'm telling you, that's danger at the highest level. Karen would tell you, you know, you go out with, I mean, it's not like addressing a group of young kids hanging out on the corner. These guys will shoot somebody just for the fun of it, and then put a knock on one of those big guns you see them have. So, yeah, I think we need, well, I don't want to try to, you know, come up with a strategy, but I can tell you that that's extremely dangerous. Wouldn't you say that, Karen?
Yes, sir, it is. It's very risky. We continue to try to engage the community, both NRHA staff and the police department, to try to get their assistance, to try to be more active in their community, and at least communicate. At this time, over in Calvert, it has been really a challenge because people are afraid to participate in public forums and those types of things. But there again, the purpose of the meeting with the police department is to try to come up with really good strategies to try to engage the community more. I can make comments about these young men with the weapons. Of course, the pictures that you were looking at were surveillance pictures or pictures that someone else had taken, and we happened to get our hands on them. On a daily basis, especially over in Calvert and Young, it is not out of the ordinary to see young men walking around with guns on their side. I have talked with some of them, but there again, you know, you have to kind of pick and choose your battles as you do this. They are legal guns that they are carrying. Most of the time, the guys that are having the guns are not convicted felons, so the police are not able to engage them. But we're in some very dangerous times, and we do have the police running operations behind the scenes trying to go after these guys that really are showing their presence for intimidation.
And then I would say, when, if you recall, when Chief Boone was talking to us, and he talked about that, that sort of, when he looked at these communities, when you overlay concentrated poverty, lack of opportunities, lack of education, this is what you see, this is sort of symptomatic of that. So when you start talking about strategies, you definitely need to start talking about long-term strategies that need to start like in, almost like preschool, third grade, all the way, so people have opportunities. What, to me, that's just, those symbolize lack of opportunity. So that's what, that's, those are the pictures, those are the outcomes of youth who don't have opportunities. And so if we start thinking of strategies, it may not be something that's like overnight, but we definitely need to start putting things in place that are more structured and guided. And that, you know, we start talking about trying to get, you know, youth, I mean, something as simple as, we've done this when I was over in Hampton, just in terms of looking and monitoring kids, making sure that they are able to read at the third grade level. So. So, that when they start getting introduced to science and things like that, it doesn't look like a foreign language. And so, you just, you create some kind of system or process in place, if it's through the Housing Authority or nonprofit, that you work with youth. So, when they get to the 12th grade, the graduation is not beyond their grasp. It's, it's a realistic opportunity. And then from graduation, there's other opportunities, whether it's the, you know, vocational, vocational two-year certification program. But if you haven't, if you haven't graduated, if you dropped out of school, your, your options are limited. And they talked about the pipeline from high, from high school. Those are the ones that, they don't have those opportunities. So, what do you think that, you know, where are these guys going to go? They're more likely, they're going to wind up in the criminal justice. And the percentage of black youth that are enrolled into criminal justice system is astronomical. And what you could tie that to, lack of education and not really have an opportunity because they didn't finish, uh, uh, high school. And so, like I said, it, it's going to be a long-term strategy if you really want to address it. But it's something that's doable, but it's really got to start somewhere.
Great. Other, uh, other comments? Thank you very much, Ma, Rose, and thank you, Ms. Rose.
Thank you.
All right, uh, Commissioners' comments?
I, uh, I have a, uh, comment, Mr. Chair, and I certainly beg the indulgence of my, uh, fellow Commissioners this morning on my comments. Uh, and as I thought about how to, uh, frame what I wanted to say, uh, this morning, I, I happened to be looking at, uh, a, uh, appointment that the incoming President, President Biden-elect, made to the, uh, Defense Secretary to a retired, recently retired Army General, which would be, if returned as First African American, uh, to head that, that, uh, cabinet seat. And, uh, he, he referenced a longstanding, uh, opposition to members of the military to that position who were recently out of the military and that the case should be made for civilian leadership. And, uh, and the reason for that is, uh, that if you come from the perspective of the military, you're always positioning yourself for war. And you are not, uh, looking at the global perspective of how the military plays into, uh, the larger advancement of our society, uh, as it relates to non-war efforts, as it relates to peace effort, as it relates to, uh, other kinds of, uh, efforts that would mitigate loss of life and death, but be more, uh, conciliatory in building relationships with other people. Just a, I think, a right position. And it made me think about my comments this morning because I think there are times that people like us who have been asked to serve on boards and commissions, uh, come to the provision, especially as it relates to policymaking and oversight. I think we're expected to bring a perspective that is not consistent with a self-perpetuation of the work, the efforts of the people doing the work. But how do we envision this agency? Uh, and I'm, when I say this agency now, I'm talking about the authority. How do we envision them in the larger scheme of things as it relates to furthering the advancement of our local community and city? And not get caught up with the whole, uh, issue of self-perpetuation. I learned a great lesson from, uh, one of, I think, one of the very good leaders that this city has seen, George Crawley, so that I both worked with him. And George would often tell me how bureaucrats and bureaucracy are built around self-perpetuation. And when we have citizen leadership that only advances, uh, that part of the board, this is a policy board. And we are supposed to know how our policies impact and incorporate into the larger, uh, community. What are the policies that helps us advance the goals, the perspectives, the vision cast in the larger community? And not just in a quote-unquote self-perpetuation, just making sure that, uh, we keep the light on in, in our J. It could, it, the case could be made that we don't keep the light on here, how can we do our work? But there has to be a balance. Recently, uh, I've raised, uh, questions about, uh, some of the decisions that we've made, uh, some of the things that we've done. And, and I've been told in essence, no disrespect to anybody, shut up and dribble. In a couple of instances, I was told very directly, there's nothing you can do about it. It's done, that's it. And if, if that's where we are as a board, uh, then I think we're in a bad place. When we can't, uh, look at what we're doing, when we can't have a full understanding of how that plays into the larger picture, when we can't raise a question about a policy, a decision, unless we're told shut up and dribble, then, then I think we're all here for naught. We don't need Ron and civilian leadership for lack of better certification. Doesn't need us to just sit here and endorse his policy. He needs us to give him the best of us. He needs to be able to understand how his directives impact our larger community. He needs a vision outside of this building. And if the only thing that we're going to do is quote-unquote defend the status quo and shut up and dribble, then we're only paying lip service. So, all of the valuable things that we sit and discuss. Doc Tench has talked about, uh, the value of diversity and, and, uh, and, and the impact, and I'm putting word in her mouth, so my word and not hers, of having a diverse, diverse wo- workforce. But it requires all of us believing that. And if we have critical people, not key, but critical people in position that don't believe that, uh, then we're not likely to get the leadership we need to move the agency forward. And what we'll end up doing is just keep replacing talking heads. So, when my turn runs up, somebody else comes in and they reinforce the policies that are... Then when big turn runs out, somebody else comes in and they reinforce the policies that... We never, ever, uh, have the opportunity to bring a perspective that should be viewed as value unless we're told shut up and dribble. Uh, so, this morning, my, my comments are to my colleagues. Uh, I was late this morning because I vacillated over whether I actually wanted to, uh, stay on the board or not. I know that my work here is an uphill battle. And, you know, it's no secret. I know that I am kind of perceived as the adversary with a lot of the, uh, senior leadership on the team. And I know that there are instances where my colleagues feel like, uh, I'm kind of making trouble and, uh, should be just continuing to dribble. Uh, but, but I do see, uh, the larger scheme of things. I do understand how our work impacts people, uh, at the lowest level. And so, my decision, obviously, by me being here was, I'm going to play this thing out. I'm going to stay with it. I'm not going to, uh, acquiesce and, uh, you know, not challenge what I feel like are obvious errors or wrongs or lapse in judgment or whatever we label them as. Every person on this board I have come to develop a relationship with, if I didn't have them when we started. And I count them as honorable, decent, uh, respectful people who are serving their community with the honest of intent. I believe that in my heart of hearts. And nobody will make me change that, except for that person that I believe it about. And only when they show me something to the contrary. So, uh, I just would implore my colleagues, when I speak against a policy or position that you have different pers- perspectives on, I am not indicting you. I am not saying you are a bad person. I am not saying that you own, uh, this perspective. What I'm saying is, let us bring this exchange of ideas, uh, to the common square, to the, what we used to call the town square. Let's bring it and have a robust discussion about how we get to a better place. And, uh, and I think if we do that, then we will be, us and the agency, uh, people who work here will be better for it.
Thank you. Thank you. Other comments from Commissioners? All righty. Then, uh, let's look at, be on page thirty-two in your package. And, uh, I'll ask, uh, I think Steve Morales to come forward. Or is it Don?
Here's Steve coming.
Speak of the devil and up he jumps.
Good morning.
Good morning. The Frenchman, good to you, Rose.
I, I think I was asked to come to make sure that you guys knew I actually didn't always work in my pajamas. But, uh, um, I'm here, I, I actually, uh, before you this morning on the first item. Uh, you guys can all hear me very well, um, but...
If you're, if you're okay with it.
Uh, I'm, it makes it a lot easier. Um, the, the first item, uh, that I got before you today is, um, N R H A is actually partnering with the Community Builders, who are, were the developer of the Broad Creek Development, the sixth project that we have out in Broad Creek. Um, those, uh, projects are reaching their fifteen-year period. Uh, believe it or not, it's been that long. Um, so they are now coming out of their tax credit compliance. Um, all the, uh, various standards and effort that went into, uh, back into Broad Creek, um, were, were good, but, um, after fifteen years, these apartments are, are needing a refresh, a significant refresh. Um, and so, what we're doing here today is, N R H A, working with T C B, um, are looking to recapitalize those projects through four percent low-income housing tax credit. Um, and N R H A, which currently we own the land, but what we're looking to do is actually enter into as, as part of the legal partnership, um, and have some entities created and, uh, facilitate, uh, us being able to do that. So, that would actually make us, we're, uh, to be, uh, part of the partnership structure and actually for Broad Creek's a little bit different than what it currently is now, where we're just the landholder. Um, one of the things that ultimately that we're looking to do, um, and we will be back to the board early next year, is take this, this project, like we've done with some other ones, through the Section eighteen disposition process, uh, to facilitate this project moving from the Section nine public housing, uh, platform over to the project-based voucher Section eight, uh, platform. Um, and long-term, or I should say, short, long, or near-term, N R H A as part of its ownership of, of these, uh, uh, i- is part of the ownership structure for the revitalization or for, for the renovation of these units, we will actually, at the end of the day, on stabilization, take ownership of, of these properties. Um, so, what we're here though, for the board today is, uh, in order for N R H A to be part of the partnership, we have to create new tax credit entities. Um, we need board authorization in order to move forward with that, um, direction and ultimately go to city council, um, to get their approval. So, today, we have a resolution before the board to approve, uh, um, and, uh, the executive director and then designate, uh, for us to move forward with the creation of entities and take that, uh, before council. So, that, uh, um, ultimately is part of this project that, to, to become part of the ownership structure for the renovation of the Broad Creek properties. Um, staff recommends approval. Are there any questions?
Questions, Commissioner?
Is, is it, is it, is it? I, I have questions because I, I'm, I'm sorry.
No, no, that's, that's exactly why we're here. This is a lot, we're like...
Yeah, 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 yeah. This is like, I think this is so, um, I understand that we would need to come partners, uh, to help advance the low-income housing tax credit application. That, is that a good understanding?
We're actually being part of the ownership structure, uh, because ultimately, we're going to be the owner of the property.
So, is that a good thing for us to be the owner?
So, over the years, um, we have found that there, uh, T C B did a great job on the development. Um, I think there's a lot of struggles, uh, with respect to, uh, dealing with the long-term ha- uh, housing tax, uh, the, uh, public housing program and the oversight and management of that. Um, so there have been struggles over the last fifteen years. And so, the authority feels that it's in the best interest for the authorities to take over that administration of the, of these properties. So, from that standpoint, um, we think T C B is very good at the development.
Right.
And so, what this structure, what this, what this process would do is, T C B would do the development. They would manage it, they would oversee it, they would get it done. And then N R, N R H A, through our, our participation, ultimately would be taking it over.
Uh, you know, I live in one of those communities. And I can tell you, man, uh, as the president of the Homeowners Association with the Lads, uh, and I need to, they can give you some great insight on, uh, the challenges for us. Uh, it was only after we got Nudbaum managing that we started to see some improvement from the rental. I mean, we, there are people sitting trash cans, I have pictures on my phone, uh, a week and a half, or a week, leaving them on the street. And the maintenance guy coming to, to use that for his dumping. I mean, with the regular weight baskets sitting on the street and, and, and the parking where the jacks and cars are right on the street and working on them. It's, it's driving some of the homeowners crazy. And, and, uh, it was only after we got Nudbaum there, uh, that, that, uh, it started to get better.
So, e- e- exactly, and that is, we feel that local decision-making will, there's situations of that. And it is, it is the intent of the authority to maintain the third-party, uh, for the management. Um, and again, you know, we have Mission College out there now, as well as Park Terrace, and those are managed also by, by third-party. Um, and so, thank you, Mr. Albert.
Management makes, is the life or death for that kind of thing, of course.
So, so help me to understand, does management have any sort of sovereignty of these folks? Or is this just pressure that can be applied?
Here's, here's what Nudbaum does that I think is different than what was done prior to. Uh, now, challenges, they have to get approval from the owner. But Nudbaum uses financial incentives. So, so like anywhere, if you leave a trash can on the terrace for, as of my day, you can be fined an additional twenty-five dollars or thirty-five dollars. I mean, that kind of incentive knocks them on the door and saying to people, uh, what your responsibility is as it relates to... I mean, we, we had people deferring, and I'm not going to name it about it, deferring the replacement of faucets and window dressings until next year when we do improvements. I, I mean, that, that's the kind of decision-making. But, but that's the mentality that, that says, you know, well, I don't know what to say, but, but that's what they, uh, decision make. And then when we get a company that's used to managing private, uh, market-rate housing, they bring a different mindset. they bring a different mindset.
Okay. But what I'm trying to make see, do we think they over control that with somebody like Nudbaum maybe doing it? Or are we developing a bureaucracy that's supposed to have the leverage to do that?
I think we have to have the discussions with the owner, right, TCB?
So, TCB, so, so, I mean, I mean, certainly for discussion, um, it is in the intent of the authority through this process to maintain what's currently there now with, with a third-party threat of Nudbaum. And again, this is, is an area, we have Mission College out there that the authority is part of the partnership and ultimately the owner, Mission College as well as Park Terrace. And that's the way we approach those properties also. Um, it, it is, as, as, as Mr. Albert has, has stated, it is a different mindset. Um, and so when you're looking at, 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 with, with this project, you want a, a third-party, um, uh, company in there who's approaching it that way.
Hey, let me, let me, and, and going to the heart of your question there, I don't think the authority has to create another level of bureaucracy. They got one.
Yep.
Sheila Joyner, I think, used to be over, uh, Mission College and, and, uh...
Park Terrace.
Park Terrace, but they have a site person who interacts with the company during the management. So you don't have a whole nother division that you gotta gear up, am I right?
Um, that, that, that's, I, I, no, I think that, that's, that's pretty much right. Right now with Broad Creek, it's actually because of public housing, um, it would fall under Donna Mills.
Right.
At this time. So there's movement to, uh, TCB. Uh, we'll see where, where it fits there. But again, I, I think you're absolutely right. It's, it's a, it's a structure that we already have in place. Uh, we're comfortable with working with third-parties. Again, you know, the authority, we own other properties and we have the Lawson Company that, that works on some and Nudbaum on others.
My, 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 meaning, uh, the heart of, the heart of my question is, are we gonna, what is the best value? What's the best value for the community and for real estate housing?
Yeah.
And that's what it comes down to. You know, are we, are we able to, uh, put pressure on the twenty percent who are making the eighty percent miserable that are in the community?
We need not lose that control to do that. We need to maintain the ability to do that.
Thank you, Steve. The, the examples of Park Terrace are helpful because I have a vision of, I have now been well-schooled by, as you said, people bringing their skillsets to their work. Been well-schooled by my colleagues to think in terms of risk and, uh, exposure. So, uh, so that's helpful. Thank you.
So other, uh, comments and questions for Steve? I guess, I, I have just one. What's, what's Plan B if we don't approve the resolution?
Plan B is that it would, uh, remain as is.
Okay. With, with all of the things that you brought up, continuing on, okay.
Right. I mean, the, the other aspect that we didn't talk, uh, fully about is, um, you know, the, the public housing platform. Um, and there's a reason, you know, going back for a while now, and again, something the board should always be looking at, the public housing platform does not deliver, uh, sufficient funding sometimes for, uh, proper maintenance of these communities. In the years one through fifteen, it may be okay. Um, in years fifteen through, you know, from now on, it will, you'll start to see the same issues that we begin to see at other public housing communities with a lack of capital money in order to address these. So we feel it's better handle it right now, um, as we have this, uh, opportunity at a, a time to recap than wait another ten, fifteen years where the, the amounts are then significantly more than we may be able to address.
Thank you, Steve. Yeah, Dick?
Take a motion, we accept the, uh, resolution.
I'll second it. Second, okay? Ms. Carnes?
Hang, hang on, hang, hang on a sec. This is Ken's been asking, just...
Okay, Ken, go ahead.
We can't hear you, this, uh, we break it up, can't hear you.
He's messing with your head, Ken. Go ahead.
Steve, explain what, we're gonna be recapitalizing this with four percent tax credits. And so then there's gonna be, uh, what, what, what could be the, uh, results of, what's gonna be the use of those four percent tax credits? How's that gonna be divvied up?
So, I mean, the, the credits are gonna be used by TCB in order to, you know, renovate these units and, and, you know, it's not a, you know, the amounts that we're looking at Digtown, but it's a, a full interior renovation of each one of these properties. Any, you know, updated or new kitchens, baths, interiors refreshing, uh, some of the mechanicals. So there's a, it, there's a, they're at a point where they need a significant refresh on the interiors, for sure.
How much, how much of the proceeds are gonna be going into, uh, the, the, the developer's pocket?
Um, as a developer, there certainly will be developer fees and that's all governed, again, by the low-income housing tax credit, uh, program. So there are, certainly there will be some developer fees that TCB will, will undertake as part of this, or will get as part of this, but that is, I, I think, uh, a, a fair, uh, compensation for the work that they're going to be doing. Um, uh, there's, uh, additional, uh, concerns, uh, there that also where, um, that is beneficial for the authority, uh, for this process ultimately as we get these, get these properties back without other protracted, um, uh, financial or, or, or legal issues too.
Yeah, Ken, can you hear me?
Hello?
Can, can you hear me, Ken?
Yes.
Let me just add this, if I might. Uh, you know, I, I've kinda delved into, uh, HRVs sort of deeply over the past two months. And I can tell you that, uh, it's only because of the tax credits that make the people with the capital interested in doing these kind of things.
Yeah, I, I, I understand. I'm just, I, I'm not against it, I'm just trying to understand it before I sign off on it.
Understood.
I, can someone explain to me what the transition is gonna be to where we're taking the developer out and we're gonna be the owner? How does that work?
Um, probably it's a, a, a much more detailed discussion. Some of it's actually still being worked through. Um, we are working on an MOU, a simplified MOU with TCB that sets out the overall game plan. Um, there's a number of financial issues, uh, past loans and true-ups that have to be addressed through a, um, sort of more of a, a, uh, phase-by-phase specific, uh, development, uh, plan or, or development services agreement. Um, the understanding is that it will take, uh, a number of years to get through because technically Broad Creek, um, is six, if not seven phases with the, the last one that was built recently. But, but what we're talking about here today is six phases. Uh, we'll be combining, uh, uh, of them, uh, for operate, or I should say, uh, development-wise, um, as part of the renovation. But, um, it will be done over time, uh, through agreement and, um, we're targeting, uh, uh, we're using the term, although it's probably not, um, absolutely exact, but, uh, we, we use the term of stabilization. Upon stabilization is when TCB will look to, to exit the project.
Okay. So these are gonna be two related but separate events. We're gonna go through the, the Lytec process to recapitalize, rehabilitate, and then the long-term plan, not yet finalized, is a transition for us to own. And, uh, they're not fully relate, dependent upon one another, but they're related.
Um, actually, if they, um, I'm gonna advance all of this a lot faster and, no, they are all related and they all need to be addressed because we're gonna be looking to come back to the board early next year, uh, for, uh, approval for, uh, uh, for resolutions, for approval of a disposition so that we can enter into the, uh, into the Lytec program or, or, or enter into a, a disposition agreement, uh, with TCB for these properties to take them out of public housing into the project-based Section eight. The reason of, uh, that critically that we, we need to go that route is for the tax credits. Um, again, this is not gonna, we're hoping this isn't gonna be any kind of major hit on our capital funding, which is very challenged at the moment. So we're trying to use the tax credits as much as possible as well as private debt to get this work done. Um, under public housing, we can't take on that private debt. Under the project-based Section eight or under the Section eight program, we'll be able to take on that private debt, um, as part of this project in order to get it done. So it, it all does.
Thank you, Steve. I just, I'll be keenly interested in looking at that MOU or whatever the, uh, the buyout scenario is, but thanks for your detail, uh, uh, explanation.
Um, I think we can look to bring that to one of the board committees.
I agree. Running finance and, you know, because that, that, you could test this level of complexity through that committee and then, and then from the fact that we would have to...
Okay, it'd be great discussion.
Thank you.
Based upon those comments, uh, any other questions, comments? All right, do, do we need to re...
No, we're good. I have a motion from Mr. Gresham and a second from Mr. Albert.
Uh, based upon those comments, is that still valid? Okay. All right, Ms. Carnes?
Mr. Albert?
Aye.
Mr. Gresham?
Aye.
Ms. Purrier?
Aye.
Mr. Benassi?
Aye.
Mr. Dillard?
Aye.
Chairman Mitaschu?
Aye.
Thank you, Steve. Now, we're moving on to the Choice Neighborhood Initiative.
And so let's think on...
Which is on page thirty-five in your line.
So, so this is my other job. Um, and so, yeah, so the, the first one was really about showing you that I actually do other work in the authority on other items, but this is, this is the lion's share. So what we, we're bringing to the board today, and this is really just a discussion, so we're not looking for any, uh, specific actions from the board today. And this is more sort of an overview of, of an issue that, that's come up, um, and how we're gonna be moving it forward. So as we move forward with the housing plan, thank you, you did, uh, what we have before you up on the screen is the current housing plan. It shows the overall, uh, sort of master plan per se for, for, um, the CNI project. We talked again about the seven-hundred-and-ten units, the two-hundred-and-twenty-six replacement units, the two-hundred-and-thirty-two, uh, uh, Lytec affordable units, and then the two-hundred-and-fifty-two market rate unit. This is, this is the overall plan that's currently approved by HUD. Um, there are all, there was always thought that there would be some flexibility in this and, and each of the numbers, but then also, um, a consideration of as we get into the various sites. Uh, the first thing that I wanted to, to note is, we, um, you know, five years always sounds like a long time. Um, it is light speed in bureaucratic terms, Lytec terms, and the, uh, this development terms. We know that we are getting incredibly challenged. So when little things come up that we see may impact us significantly down the road with respect to, um, our timeline, um, we wanna address those earlier rather than later. We could have waited, uh, and to see how things pan out a little bit more on the, on what I'm about to talk about, but our concern is that we don't have a lot of Lytec rounds to hit, so we gotta figure these things out sooner rather than later. Next slide then.
Radu's bringing it to Steve's side.
Oh, uh, Radu, next slide, please. Uh, one back. So, so right now, uh, the master plan is that it's divvied up amongst a number of phases. And, uh, again, phase one, uh, which is, is now, you know, not really the first thing that's coming out of the ground was the Snyder block. Um, and then phase two is our blocks, uh, nineteen and twenty, phase three seventeen and eighteen, and then four and five are on to tidewater proper. Um, the issue that we have with Snyder, um, and again, we, we were hoping that it would be one that we'd be able to get started earlier. Um, it was one that we would hope, again, if we did have some, some grand aspirations, it's crossing, uh, St. Paul's Boulevard, it's into downtown. Um, and so there were a lot of, a lot of, uh, weight put on this, this, this site. Um, the issue that we're finding, um, is as they look at the building, um, there are a lot of pressures on, um, what this building looks like, how big it is, it's in downtown, its needs. So what is a, you know, what we're trying to get is a, uh, a project, um, that hurts, that, not that hurts, but hits certain, uh, mixed income points. We're finding that this building has gone from something where typically with a, we're looking at a hundred-and-thirty-eight units, forty-one, uh, replacement units, uh, probably targeting somewhere in the fifteen to twenty million dollar range. This bu- building is, is, is on an initial financial feasibility is, is crossing thirty million dollar range. Um, and what Brinchor has identified is when you take all the sources that they have, uh, available to, to them, that would be the CNI fund, potential debt from, uh, uh, from operations for rent, um, and then, uh, the, uh, the Lytec fund, that they have gaps anywhere from three million dollars to over ten million dollars, depending on how they do it and whether the, the city is able to provide some funding, uh, which the city was initially interested in doing, is, uh, providing some funding for apartment garage, which would be necessary for the structure. Um, so in those analysis, there are like, there's, there, we're getting to a point where we're not sure if those gaps can be met. Um, the city, you know, potentially would have considered, uh, addressing some of those gaps, then COVID hit, um, and the budgets were challenged all around. And so what the city has said, has said is, it's not that they're absolutely saying, "We can't do this." What they're saying is, "We can't do it in the current budget structure and we don't know when we would be able to do it," um, as COVID is still impacting the city. Um, and that's what I said, is going back to, we have a five-year timeline. And so our, our issue became is, we have to still deliver these units, we have to, um, expend that funding. So can we sideline Snyder and look at other sites? Now, when we were building the CNI master plan, um, there, there was method to our madness. Um, and, uh, part of our madness was that we did hold some sites in reserve. One, if we looked at it, we, we knew that we could only deliver a certain number of units over those five years anyway. So if you, if we would have shown, you know, a thousand-plus units on, on site, um, it was something that we knew we couldn't achieve in the, in those five years. That's why that, that number of seven, ten sort of came about, is that there was al- always a certain limit of what could be delivered in the five years with the Lytec program, um, and getting things built. The other thing is infrastructure. Um, um, infrastructure and a hundred-year flood plan. So we held a couple of sites out and, what, uh, Radu, go to the next, next slide? Actually, go one more. So what we did is we held, uh, uh, critically, uh, uh, block sixteen, uh, which is actually right across from block twenty, where the first construction is gonna begin. We held that one out because it was really part of a, a green space as well as it is within the hundred-year flood plan. This building's gonna be slightly more expensive because it'll most likely need to be filed if we develop on, if we develop on that site. Um, the other sites that we held out were three A and three B. And again, they were at the edge of the project. We weren't sure infrastructure-wise, within the five years, if we would be there, um, um, in time, essentially, um, early on when we were doing the master planning, if we'd be able to get out to that portion of the community in time, um, and, and have everything work together. So what we're doing now is, as we, as we look at Snyder, um, and make the determination of can, can we get this done in the five years or not, um, let's look at some other sites. So that's what we're directing Brinchor to do now. So asking them to do evaluation, the type of unit. We know three A and three B, those are more of a, a lower density, more family, um, oriented, which we need as part of the project. So, um, we're actually, uh, more interested in, in those sites. And then with sixteen, what building would, uh, be there probably more, be more or closer akin to what we would have across the street in block nineteen and twenty and seventeen and eighteen. So more of maybe a three or four, four-story building, uh, mid-rise, um, more ones and twos and that nature. So, so we're asking them to take a look at that, do some financial, uh, feasibility around it, um, and then come back, um, and then so that we can all discuss and then formulate the plan that ultimately, um, you know, community, uh, policymakers gain acceptance and then ultimately ask HUD, who ultimately have to sign off on all of this. Um, so we're starting that process and saying like, "Hey, we got a problem, let's evaluate, let's explore, and then let's come back to everybody and discuss." Now, the, uh, the last thing I wanna say with that is Snyder is still important. Um, and, um, in discussions with the city, what we're still talking about is, even if it's not part of CNI, that we still wanna, uh, ultimately get affordable units on that site. So whether the city is, is looking at potentially including area needs, you know, this may be part of RFP and that's, that's added in, but it's something that we could say, we don't think we'll get it done in the next five years, but it's something that maybe we look to the future, um, as a, uh, in, in different approaches that we can get done. Um, so with that, again, that's my briefing to the board and happy to take any and all questions, because I know you guys should have some.
So block eight is, um, uh, is big enough or what, what's wrong with block eight?
So, uh, block seven A, seven B, and eight, those are being held out, um, for after CNI. Um, this is the, the, always the issue that, you know, there's mixed income and then there's mixed use. We'll get some commercial on some of the ground floors, particularly in, uh, twenty, seventeen and eighteen and maybe a little bit on nine. We'll get some commercial on some of the ground floors, particularly in, uh, twenty seventeen and eighteen, and maybe a little bit on nine. But really, uh, the idea was that you wanna have, uh, a, a more community downtown, more of a commercial focus on those blocks. So when we were designing, um, um, uh, actually sort of redesigning a few years ago, we decided to hold that area out. I'm saying is, that would be the area where you would get more of the commercial development, more of the, uh, non-residential space in that, in that region. But that was held out for that reason. We thought that that's always gonna trail the market, um, and it may trail a number of, you know, a number of years after the market. But it, it won't, it wouldn't be part of the, the, the first part. And that's typical what we've seen in, uh, in, uh, as we explored other areas across the, the, you know, the, the country. That's what happened. That comes in after.
Well, just, yeah, and you said sixteen looks expensive. Uh, certainly it's on the infrastructure, on the roof, but, but good infrastructure. But eight is probably better land, and, uh, you know, right there with the infrastructure. Of course, seven, either one of the sevens would be great, uh, well, seven D, you may have some small land there, but, you know, uh, but sixteen will not equal to Snyder, uh, si- uh, capacity.
Sixteen won't, but sixteen and three A and three B, that's where we're hoping they will. So, and that's why we're looking at, it's not, it's not one or the other, it's really all together.
I'm sorry, I didn't.
Oh, no, I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't make that clear. That's mine.
Can I ask a question? This is Joe Dillard.
Yeah, Joe, go ahead.
Uh, good, uh, thank you for the presentation, uh, Steve. My concern or question would be, um, from the inside that I heard, I thought that certain council members supported the St. Paul's quadrant plan because NRHA showed a good faith in the Snyder lot. In your presentation now, it seems like because of the funding gap, Snyder's kinda off the five-year plan, and we're gonna then move the one district or the one area that was in Super Ward six back to options that are in Super Ward seven? Is that correct?
Um, that is correct.
Okay, and there's been no pushback from that? I, I heard you say that Snyder is important, but my question then, Steve, is how important is it? Because now this type of behavior makes me feel like NRHA is operating in the same manner that it's operated in the past. How important is the Snyder lot to, to being a part of this plan? To show our effort and good faith that we're not just rehousing African-Americans in Super Ward seven?
Snyder is important. Um, the issue would be is being able to pull it off, um, in the, in, in the CNI plan. And what is, I think, more important i- in this case is that the project, um, with, is it with its funding, with its timeline, um, is something that probably won't get done if Snyder, unless, you know, we can find significant, again, very significant other resources in order to bridge those gaps. Um, I guess from this standpoint, where that's why we're bringing it in early, uh, for discussion. This is, this is, uh, absolutely part of the process, Joe. So, uh, these concerns, I think, are, are, and your concerns are absolutely, uh, critical in the overall discussion. Um, and then what I would say, though, is not doing Snyder as, as part of the CNI project in the five years doesn't take it out of the discussion for, uh, future affordable housing at the site. I think that's still, uh, real critical as part of the discussion. And, um, definitely the city, uh, Dr. Susan Perry is in charge of the St. Paul's office. Um, she, she, you know, has, has stated the same thing, is that Snyder is important in that terms. So that is working the policy side with the, with the city to ensure that it, it, again, in the future, that it still would be an affordable, uh, project. It just means that it's not done in the next five years, but it, it doesn't mean that it doesn't get done.
Are, are we gonna have that in writing, Steve?
Um, I, I think it's part of the discussion, and ultimately, you know, I, I, you know, we're not council, but, uh, um, it's sort of something that we, it can be looked at. And I guess if, 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 uh, that's a, a critical step, then it's something that the CNI team, the city, and the authority would, would look at.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Steve.
Uh, uh, other comments?
Just, just a brief comment, Steve. Sometimes I feel like I'm looking at two different cities for the same project. I mean, you know, I get these briefings and stuff from the city, too. And, uh, sometimes it seems that we're saying two different things almost, you know? Not bad, not, you know, suggesting that this was a dry move, government run. Just simply saying it doesn't seem to be, uh, you know, synchronized. Uh, th- this morning, my mom was talking about, uh, the, uh, economic conclusion. And I just received a very, uh, detailed economic conclusion strategy from the city that, uh, almost could just be put right in place from our planning. No, I don't.
So there, there will be a briefing, um, next Tuesday to the SPAC. There'll be a briefing later to, to council. So what I'm bringing forth right now, or have been the internal discussions with the CNI team. So if the city, if there's other discussions that have been part of on this that I'm not aware of, uh, that.
I'm not suggesting that you are out of any loop or conduct. What I'm saying is, with certain little things, uh, you know, if you say this is late week, and so I said, "No, this is now." When you said it's outside of CNI, I said, "No, this is very much a part of the housing lease responsibility to develop." You know, I see that we're not coupled to it, and some entrances, that's all.
So, and I'll be very candid, I'm a realist. Um, and so this is why I'm bringing this to you guys now for discussion and for briefing, and, and setting up the process on how we get there. We can go through this process, and, you know, in February or March, everyone says, "No, we still wanna make Snyder happen." And this is how we're gonna get it done, and that's what we'll do.
I don't know you, Steve.
Uh, but.
So I mean, if city, if it's just a political imperative, if it's a political priority, the city can find their revenue to support it. Um, something else will drop off. But that's a, that is a council, that's a political, I think, consideration. And we always feel in that, you know, the reality versus the other stuff.
So, yeah, so the, with the CNI team, what, what we face is, and, and again, you know, things have been generally kept on schedule. Um, and, you know, we've been faced with some pretty significant hurdles with COVID, as well as the lawsuit. And so, um, keeping things on schedule, um, and making that date. One of the other things, um, of Mr. Albert that we're looking at, um, that, and we had a conversation with HUD yesterday on, um, and, and we, we have a monthly call with them, and we state it every month, which is, is with the challenges that we have, that the timeframe of the September, finishing September two thousand twenty-five is a tough hurdle, is gonna be a tough hurdle. We, we let them know, we're on a very, very tight timeframe, you know, hitting every Lytec, uh, submission and winning them. Uh, we think we're in good shape with the state on that, but it's not a given that we'll hit every nine percent, uh, credit award. And so, given the challenges that we've had, we've asked HUD, saying, "Please talk, you know, with Congress, because it, it would be an act of Congress to extend," um, that we would absolutely be interested in extension. Again, as a, as a realist, I work within the current schedule provided, but certainly we are advocating for extending that. And then that gives even, that gives us some more flexibility, where we may be able to say, "Okay, we can wait." Um, so as a realist and, and working with the CNI team, and we were all, uh, you know, the city, um, um, city leadership, NRHA leadership, we were all in discussion on this, saying, "Let's, let's start going down this path, because we're not sure, uh, what's gonna happen." Um, the city finances, you know, they're always tight, but with COVID, it's even tighter. And so their ability to, to, to help support, um, this project, uh, um, is, is challenged at the moment.
Well, thank you for your, uh, contribution to this whole thing, Steve. You have a, you have a big presence in this thing, and, uh, influenced a lot of it, so thank you.
And just as a technical question, um, if, if, uh, if changes need to be made, they have to go through HUD.
Correct.
And does this board not have to sign off on that, that those changes to HUD? Or review them or something?
Yeah, there, every, I mean, there's, there's a process.
And we'll have another chance to really want to.
As part of the HUD process, there's, there's a requirement for the community review. And so what I think I put on, on the presentation on the last one, uh, I, I didn't, um, but what I, I, I have somewhere in my notes, is, is it's a, it's a community conversation and gain acceptance. And that is exactly right. So if council and this board say, "Now, we're not good with this," then it doesn't move on to HUD. Uh, if we go out to the community and the community has an extreme negative reaction, it doesn't go to HUD. If we all look at and say, "Okay, let's make some modifications," is that, it, and that's what this is, is all part of, this is the process. I wanted to get it in early, say, "Hey, this is a potential, and we're gonna take it through. We're gonna gather more information and bring it back to everybody." Like I say, the next steps are a briefing of the, um, St. Paul's Advisory Committee, uh, um, next week. Uh, uh, then the city's gonna, city staff's gonna brief council, and then we're gonna continue that discussion over the next few months.
Thank you.
All righty. Well, thanks for Steve. Steve, thanks again.
I will, I will remask.
Remask.
Thank you all.
Thanks, Steve.
Thanks, Steve.
All right, now let's, uh, ask, uh, Hot Mike Clark to come on, page forty-one in your packet.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Michael?
I'm actually doing this virtually, as, uh, Kevin White with Butler Snow will actually, uh, make the presentation. This is regarding the, uh, Lakewood Apartments, uh, bond resolution, which you actually saw back in July of this year. So, uh, this is the final approval that we're going for, and with that, I'll let, uh, Kevin White take it. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. This is Kevin White with Butler Snow, and, uh, happy to be with you this morning. Uh, I was with you in July, um, for the inducement resolution on this project involving, um, acquisition and renovation and rehabilitation of the Lakewood Plaza Apartments on Tidewater Drive in Norfolk. The, uh, the group, uh, the developer has, uh, now received a forty-two M letter, uh, stating that they will have, uh, four percent tax credits, and part of that structure is also the, the bond transaction that we talked about in July. Um, they found a purchaser for the bonds, which would be Cedar Rapids Bank and Trust. It's actually the same purchaser that, uh, recently worked on a transaction that would close with the Kojic High-Rise Apartments in Norfolk. Um, so this one is very similar to that in structure. Um, the plan is to move forward to close this financing in early part of two thousand twenty-one, hopefully January. Um, and so the, the documents, um, have been circulated to council for the authority and others. Uh, they'll continue to be subject to review and comment by your council. Um, and like any, uh, bond transaction through, um, productivity bonds, uh, there's no, um, liability to the authority. The, this resolution, uh, provides in section six and seven for indemnity and limitation of your liability. Um, also in section five, costs and expenses are to be paid by the developer and the borrower. And there is an annual administrative fee that will be paid to the, uh, authority, um, to be the issuer for the, for the bonds. Um, so with that, I don't have a whole lot more to say. I'm just opening up any questions you may have.
Comments? No, I think we're okay. Thank you very much, Kevin.
No, thank you.
If there are, there are no comments or questions, I'll entertain a motion to approve the resolution. So moved. Uh, second?
Thank you. For, for the record, we have a motion from Mr. Benassi and a second from Mr. Dillard. Mr. Albert is, uh, is not in the room right now. I'll call the roll. Mr. Gresham?
Aye.
Ms. Purrier?
Aye.
Mr. Benassi?
Aye.
Mr. Dillard?
Aye.
Chairman, Miss Satchel?
Aye.
All righty, thank you.
Very much.
Sign up for money.
Yeah.
Did you want to?
Uh, Mr. Albert, do you want to vote on the Lakewood Plaza Apartments bond issuance final approval?
What are we voting on?
We are voting on the resolution for the final approval of the Lakewood Plaza Apartments bond that already changed.
We approved the bond in July.
Aye.
You're, you're voting aye, Mr. Albert?
I'm voting aye.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thanks very much.
I can vote, that's what I'm voting.
You, you make the motion? Oh, okay.
All pays money, Ken Benassi.
On page forty-six and forty-seven, that's a little length. We have the, uh, development activities, um, where we've had sales. Uh, no sales in, uh, November, no acquisitions. But then we'll go ahead and move on to page forty-eight, uh, and, uh, Mr. Jackson? Yes, forty-eight and one seventeen.
Okay. Um, again, you're, uh, we have before you the, the overview of, uh, uh, the request for a change order for legal services. Uh, we currently have a, a legal services con- two-year legal services contract for the total amount of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, uh, not to exceed over the two-year fiscal year period, uh, fiscal year twenty-one, and also fiscal year twenty-two. Um, independent of just the normal, um, regular service contract, we've incurred expenses related to the St. Paul's lawsuit, which has, uh, prompted us to, uh, come before you to ask for an increase in the legal services contract of a hundred and fifty thou- I mean, one million, five hundred thousand dollars. We currently incurred about six hundred and eighty thousand dollars in legal services, uh, related to the St. Paul's lawsuit. We anticipate through the end of the fiscal year, uh, another, uh, a cost of about a hundred and eighty, eight hundred and twenty thousand dollars, uh, which would, uh, increase, uh, the total cost for legal services instead of nothing, uh, a million five, which would bring the total legal services contract to two million, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So what we're asking today is that we, that you, uh, grant us, uh, approval to increase the current legal services contract by one million, five hundred thousand dollars. And, oh, I just, uh, then I forgot to add that the funding for the St. Paul's lawsuit is coming not from any of our, our op- the operating budget or earnings or reserves, is actually being funded out of the, uh, capital fund program.
So this won't send any, any of the things back?
No.
Okay? All right. Uh, any questions, comments? Uh, I'll entertain a motion then.
So moved.
A second?
Second.
I'll second. Oh, okay. Mr. Benassi, right? Ms. Carnes?
Mr. Albert?
No.
Mr. Gresham?
Aye.
Ms. Purrier?
Aye.
Mr. Benassi?
Aye.
Mr. Dillard?
No.
Chairman, Miss Satchel?
Aye. You got it?
Yes.
Okay, uh, thank you. We'll then go ahead and look at the, uh, starting on page fifty, all of the contracts, the money, um, those kinds of things, uh. And, uh, Donna, if you're on the phone, can you tell us about our charge-offs?
Yes, good morning. Could you hear me?
Yes, uh-huh.
Yes, good morning. So, um, as you'll see, our charge-offs are very low, considering our average write-off amount. Uh, that is mainly due to the eviction moratorium. As you know, we've not been able to do any evictions for non-payment of rent. And so that is, um, shown in this number of seven thousand five hundred. It is very low compared to what it normally is. So it, if you go to our accounts receivables report, you'll see that number up, because those residents are still in housing with us. So it, if you go to our accounts receivables report, you'll see that number up because those residents are still in housing with us. Um, so this is as of September. Uh, I shared the same information with you last month with our quarterly report and it's got two point seven two percent delinquency rate for the agency.
Okay. Uh, any questions, comments, cash reports, receivables?
I'd, I'd like to, this is Virginia. I'd like to, there's a couple of noteworthy items on the cash report this month. One of them is that, um, our jobs plus program, we've, we've had, um, five hundred thousand dollars sitting out there for a while. Um, our accounting staff is, in our program, people have been working with HUD to try to shake that money loose. I think that they've, uh, according to the emails I received, um, I guess late last week, they think that they've resolved the issues with HUD, so we should be getting about two hundred and thirty-five thousand this week. And then hopefully the balance, I would say, maybe end of December, first part of January. So that was good news. Um, that's been hanging out there for a while. The other item is you'll notice on the cash report, um, CNI popping up for the first time. We requested a LOX load back in mid-November and we're hoping that LOX will be loaded with, um, from HUD and we'll be able to draw that, that money down hopefully by the end of this, um, calendar year. So with the jobs plus being shaken loose and being able to access the CNI money, which, which paid for admin, that's about, you know, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So the cash report right now is looking pretty good.
Yeah, and that's actually-
Any questions?
I'm trying to get to page number of that.
Oh, I'm sorry. Fifty-three.
Yeah, page fifty-three is what it's talking about and you'll see the numbers there. But, uh, always good news, but I just be careful with HUD with the checks in the mail.
I got you.
You know, it's how they seize a lot of packages to get lost, you know?
Understood.
Any questions, comments? We're on this section. Uh, is there any new business? Folks, all right. Then I'll go ahead and move on to the, uh, committee meeting notes. Uh, again, while I think they're, they're very valuable, I really do miss the fact that we're not in the, in the communities. I mean, that's, it was one of the whole reasons for us to put the community, put the groups together is that we could get out uh, here directly from the folks. So hopefully that we can, um, weather this storm and, and see where we are on that. Uh, without further ado, then I will go ahead and, uh, open the public comment portion. Uh, any caller, if you would like to submit a comment, please dial star nine to raise your hand. You will then be called upon. Uh, please address the room by stating your first and last name, your address, and then your comment. Uh, again, this is more for comments than, uh, questions and answers. We may not be able to answer a question right now, but please know that we will make arrangements to follow up, uh, expeditiously to address your question. So, uh, I'll, I'll ask for any comments from the public. Remember star nine.
I have no hands raised, but I'm going to go check the-
If you would, please check the hallway.
We have no questions from the public.
All right, then I will move on to the next.
Okay. Before, before we go closer, I just wanted to, there was a comment, a comment that-
Okay.
Before we go in the close.
Sure, sure. I, I'll just close the public comment period.
Can you maybe leave it open just in case?
In case somebody comes, yes. When I say close it, I mean just, you can-
Oh, I was just, um, in, uh, response to Commissioner Albert's, uh, comments about the economic inclusion. One of the reasons, uh, we're going about it the way we are, to this my understanding that the city didn't reach, they didn't have a roundtable, they didn't reach out to any of these to give any feedback. And, uh, and I, the economic inclusion, that theme is sort of working in three spheres. You got the St. Paul's, which we're with the city and house, city and housing authority are working on one, to develop one plan, working with Red Shore. Then you have the city, they're doing their plan. And then we want to have our own plan. And, I mean, it's sort of, you know, we deal primarily with HUD and they have their regulations and the city with the state. But we felt like we wanted to start from the ground up. We just didn't want to put numbers out. We wanted to make sure that we at least have, gave the contractors the opportunity to talk. So that would help us develop. And like I said, I don't think the city, as far as I know, the city hasn't done that part of the process.
Understood. And, uh, I, no, I, I fully understand what you're saying. I mean, I didn't understand it before you said it.
Oh, okay.
But since you said it, I do understand. And just to provide a little more-
Okay.
Uh, uh, information to you on it. Uh, the reason I made the comment is that I've been working on on the record all, all this, yeah. So, so the mayor and I have been having discussions with some other people about the whole concept of economic inclusion. How we might have a plan that kind of fits everywhere.
Okay.
And that's why I think all of that stuff gets rolled around in my head sometimes.
Okay.
But, but I understand.
Okay. But going back to your previous, uh, the verbal official, um, you know, we need to make sure these things work. Yeah. And, and, and I'm probably the one that people dislike the most because I raise the practical questions from the private sector. But we've got to have it to a point where you don't, you don't make, uh, a minority, man, woman, African-American, Latino, whatever, the president and then everybody else below who's getting the money.
That's right.
Uh, yeah, right. Be the same old, oh, tell us. Yeah. And, and so we need to find a way of making it work. Making it work in a real and sincere way that we change the way we do business, change the community, change all the things that need to be changed as best we can. At least we make it support. I applaud you for going and talking to the minority contractor. They're, they're one facet. Yeah. And you need to get all these facets and then figure it's tough.
It is.
And, and you don't just sort of do it from the top down. You've got to do it from the bottom.
And it happens on a bunch of levels. I mean, there's the, there's the legal, the law-
Right.
That require a whole different set of processes to change. There's regulations, which then is different, you know, it's going to be a way of working. And then there's just the actual practice. This is probably what we've done. This is the, you know, the kind of internal policies, right, thinking of the immediate impact. But you don't want to not work on the other two things as well. So it's, it's kind of multi-faceted.
Yeah, I'll, I'll be honest. I would far rather it to be a male, white, whatever-owned business, that all the key mechanics or key project managers are coming up and learning the system. That's far more valuable to me than somebody who has, you know, a, you know, someone at the front, but then the band itself is-
Because, because just having it somebody had.
We know that that-
Nobody else benefit.
We've heard of that.
That, huh?
We heard that happening even amongst, when we had the roundtable, they said that in some places they actually throw out check. You know, they have a figurehead that's a female owned business. When they go out, they have no involvement.
Right.
And it's all, and it's just the designation and they feel like they get it, but they have no part in the business whatsoever.
But it is hard. And, and, uh, and I think when we go into it, we have to appreciate that, that there is no other thing. We can't just push a button and make it all happen. It, it is hard.
Yeah.
But, but we can do stuff to support. Now, I love the idea that they can have that, um, identifying those, okay? And then, and then mentoring that, however, whatever that means, you know, do we as a project of this board recruit mentors? You know, actually get some meat on, on those, you know?
But here's the thing-
We are growing that next, um, regardless of what the laws are.
Here's the thing that, that challenged us when I talked about having discussions and, and, and the mayor and I thought, right, we don't want, what ended up happening is sometimes minority business can be confused for small business. And, and all minority businesses are small business.
Right.
And you can have large minority businesses and still not get economic conclusion. And, and some of the people who, uh, press the hardest about economic conclusion include a large minority business. So we don't want synoptic language to say because something is small or the fact that it's minority doesn't have to be a handicap.
Yeah.
And, uh, so, so there, I've, I've cut my teeth on something. Uh, I used to be, uh, responsible for, uh, minority and outside contracts for the Lawson Company. And, uh, again, the guy in the president's name, Gary Hartman, told me, he said, Al, he said, I appreciate you trying to get people in the mix like this, but it's going to challenge you. And one of the things was capital.
Yeah.
Because we pay every two weeks, like clockwork, for a law company. That was phenomenal. But I would regularly have guys trying to get a check every Friday because he couldn't pay his people.
Yeah.
And it drove us nuts because I'm saying we pay more regularly than anybody else and you're still trying to, Mr. Albert, can you give me half of it in advance? I'm, you know, that's the kind of challenge that I have learned how to overcome. And, uh-
And we could go on and-
Oh, no, no, I like, I like.
Okay, well, let me ask Jen one last time to check.
Hey, hey, I, I, gee, Donna, Donna, I'd like to get one brief comment. Uh, and this is directly to Alfon, Alfonso. Alfonso, I think this conversation we just had is a good example of why we are not just dribbling. Shut up and dribble.
Right.
I think this, this is a way of working toward, uh, beyond just, uh, it, it's, we're trying to move the needle. And I think, and I think that, I hope that enharths you.
Thank you, buddy.
Okay. Jen?
We have no hands raised for public comment.
All right, then I will end the public comment period and then we'll talk about the closed session. Um, being resolved that the authority will convene in the closed meeting pursuant to the Virginia Freedom of Information Act as amended the act to discuss the following matter, which is specifically exempted from public disclosure by the code section referred below. One, consultation with the authority's legal counsel regarding probable litigation requiring the provision of legal advice by counsel as authorized by section two dot two dash three seven one one dot A dot seven of the act. May I have a motion?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Second?
Okay. Ms. Carnes?
Mr. Albert?
Aye.
Mr. Gresham?
Aye.
Ms. Purrier?
Aye.
Mr. Benassi?
Aye.
Mr. Dillard?
Aye.
Chairman Masaccio?
Aye. Well, again, we normally do take a couple of minutes. Uh, is there anything with the virtual that?
So, um, we will have to call, uh, Mr. Benassi and Mr. Joe Dillard on a secure line in order to conduct the closed meeting. For those, uh, members of the public who wish to stay on the line during the closed meeting, it will be complete silence. All lines will be muted. Mr. Benassi, Mr. Dillard will be on a separate secure line to conduct the meeting. Um, and then we will then open it up after the closed session to the general public again. So this line, um, will now go muted. Uh, Mr. Benassi, Mr. Dillard, we will call you separately for your secure line access.
So should we hang up our telephones then?
I'd recommend to do that.
All right.
All right, thank you very much. This line is now closing for closed session to the general public.
Hi. What do I have to put here? My name? It's cold and the pens don't work. Oh, there you go. I work for NRHA. Yep. In the IT department. There you go. Thank you. Bye-bye.
Rabu? Your line isn't muted.
The flag, the flag is now live.
Okay, I don't have to wait for the thing to...
No.
All right. Whereas the authority has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas section two dot two dash three seven one two dot D of the nineteen fifty Code of Virginia, as amended, requires certification by this authority that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, now therefore upon motion duly made and seconded, be resolved that the authority hereby certifies that to the best of each commissioner's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from openly meeting requirements by Virginia law were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed meeting, and two, only said public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the authority. May I have a motion?
A move.
A second?
Second.
Okay, Ms. Carnes?
Mr. Albert?
Aye.
Mr. Gresham?
Aye.
Ms. Purrier?
Aye.
Mr. Benassi?
Aye.
Mr. Tillard? I'm sorry. Thank you. Chairman Massaccio?
Aye. All right. Uh, do we need to do the public thing one more time?
Uh, we can if you like.
Is there anybody on it? No, there's nobody on, then I think we're okay.
Yeah.
Uh, then, then Janice, you'll let us know about tomorrow's meeting?
So tomorrow was NRAJ's Employee Annual Meeting. We're doing it on a virtual platform this year due COVID. Um, as usual, we have invited the retirees to join us as well virtually. It's something we do every year, even in person. Uh, so tomorrow, um, it will look the same and look different at the same time. It starts at eleven AM. We do have Chairman Massaccio and Vice Chair Albert doing opening remarks and indication.
It'll be at ten thirty.
Be here at ten thirty. I'll have you set up and ready to go. Um, that will be followed by Ron, Mr. Jackson's remarks. Um, we do have an accomplishments video that we're pulling in, kind of like a year in review. And that's a video that we've worked, um, amongst every director and department in the organization, about a ten minute video. Um, followed by our employee recognition program. We've got a couple of groups that are going to be recognized, um, as well as, um, our Employee of the Year, Employee of the, uh, I gotcha award that we typically do is a little bit different this year, so we're having that recognized. And then, um, our service awardees for five, ten, fifteen, twenty. And then, um, our service awardees for 5, 10, 15, 20, 25, 30 years of service. Um, after that, we'll do, um, the employee gift, which is a really exciting, uh, generic version of the Apple EarPod. You see those little white things that go in your ear? They're wireless. Um, we are doing those and a very, um, uh, small amount of a gift card to Walmart for each employee. And all of this is kind of offset by the cost savings of having the event at the shared venue. So we're still, um, uh, on budget with that, so that's good to know. And we'll close it out. Um, we're hoping, hoping to have it done, um, in an hour, but I'm really hoping for 45 minutes. And then, um, the short, sweet and to the point. And then, um, Mr. Jackson may have some announcements about how the meeting will be ending. I don't want to spoil any surprises, um, on the, on the phone today, but I, I think we're doing an early release for staff, um, which is what we've done in the past. So that's...
Is there a call-in number for us, or...
There is. So I will email you the link. So it's open, um, so it's, uh, not open to the public. It's just open for employees and, and board members as well. So, uh, it's just a link that you can click to watch and hear at the same time. Completely different than how we do this. It'll be managed by a third-party entity called BroadNet. You don't want to even have to deal with any of that. That's what I deal with.
The daughter-in-law will have a watch party right here.
Yeah, well, you'll be live. So it's really live. Everything is live, except for the video.
Hard to be hit yourself.
So that sums it up. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have, but I will email that through the access link today.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything before I hammer us out? I will now call the December Board of Commissioners meeting to a close. Thank you so much.
I got you. Is that me? Thank you.